And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What would we like to do with the consent agenda? Would somebody move or approve?
I move we approve as presented.
Now, second up.
All in favor of the sitting on the consent agenda? I have a couple of thank you notes to pass along. We have received a thank you note for New Hope for Women. For the donation that the town voted to give, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Luckily voted on at annual meeting. And from Sweetser, which we voted to give two thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars, which was their request to Sweetser. And that thank you comes with a note that Sweetser serves more than 20,000 children, adults, and families every year. So that was good to be acknowledged. And so we have been thanked by those two organizations, and that's a good thing. Is there a public comment?
Next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. We are going to meet again on Monday, September ninth at 5:30, right here in the West Bath Town Office. And we might note that our representatives will be here that night. They were called away to a special session this evening, so the plan to have them here tonight was changed. Okay. Now, did I do it right? Public comment.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Liv Woodward, and I'm here to hand deliver some notes I've pulled together. I did email you all this afternoon, and I know this is short notice, and so I thought sometimes it's easier to see things on paper. Our committee is inquiring if we may be allowed to host an informational presentation at the, for example, at the fire burn. We wish to offer information and education concerning the House of Representatives Bill 763. I've included information that you can look at at your leisure. And maybe we can talk about next time.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We can put this request on the agenda for next meeting.
Love the, thank you, thank you, Madeline.
Okay, so I would like to move the fire department bid to position one, if that's okay with you all. Yeah?
Just a follow-up on old business.
Okay.
Where's the revision energy sit?
We had a proposal come in later today for changes here at the town office. It will be about 2,000 more than we originally anticipated to include dimmers.
On top of the 6,000 the school wants to spend additionally?
Correct.
Jesus. All right.
I don't think we want to pursue the project in this building unless we have dimmers. I think we're gonna have problems with the amount of light that we get. So we can wait to discuss that another time or...
I think it's wants another discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, the proposal came in after four o'clock today, so I didn't really look at it in any detail.
Okay.
And then we have to resubmit for any returns that we got for green energy.
Now, Dave, you may be able to help me on this. Would an adjustment in scope or an increase in spending on that warrant, could that be amended at a special public meeting? Or does it need to wait till regular town meeting?
I think it could be amended at a special town meeting.
Yeah.
The other thing is to check and see if the school has any money in the fund they gave them, $100,000, when our issue was changed over.
Yeah.
A capital account, is any money left in that account?
I would have to check.
Yeah, that may be an option.
Okay, well, we can...
And they also have money, I believe, in another capital account the school has. So there are options without going to a town meeting for a second.
Okay.
But other than that, you're right, it'd be a special town meeting.
Okay. But we're not restricted to a regular town meeting, you don't think?
No, not for that, no.
Okay, good. Then we definitely warrant another discussion.
Another item for the September ninth agenda.
Absolutely.
All right.
Might as well bring our sleeping bags.
Maybe winter coats. Okay. Are we ready to go to regular business and talk about moving item three up to the first place? Because there is only one bid on...
I mean, we take item three out of turn and take it first.
One second, Ben. Okay. All right, so let's look at the fire department. This is Chief Bean, for those of you who may not know. This is so exciting.
What I just gave you is the contract for Greenwood Emergency Vehicles. If we were to go with them. As Mary would said, we're the only ones to answer the RFP.
Are you satisfied that this does everything that we need the truck to do?
This, this contract here?
Yeah.
The only, the only question we have about it, and I will be speaking with Chris Champagne again, is if you go to the page you were just on before. I think it was, maybe this page was for that, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Truck within approximately 365 days after it's seen over water. They put some things in there that, you know, are beyond their control.
Right.
Certain factories and things going straight there or whatever. But I put in the RFP that we would find $100 a day after 365 days. And it's really just to protect ourselves. I know we looked around at the end of the process. I know many other fire departments have to speak with them to have, when they stressed that we had that $100 a day fine after 365 days. I'm confident and they're confident that the truck will be here before then anyway, probably like 10 or 11 months. But after some horror stories that I heard, I believe it was very necessary.
So if you want...
But I just see how they wrote it in there, it doesn't...
Right.
I didn't say approximately.
Right, you want...
I said 365 days.
You want the language to reflect the $100.
See exactly where they stand on that.
Now, do they want a down payment, or they want 560,000?
No, it could be, it can be done really however you wanted to. We spoke about this before. We paid for it upfront, they'll give a discount of $15,000. Or you can choose to pay for it all at the end, after we receive the truck and runs it and you go look at it and make sure that everything is what we want it to be. And I believe that the vote was that we were gonna, or everybody's opinion was that we're gonna pay for it at the end. I think everybody felt that that made the most sense, I knew David did, and I agree with it too.
Makes sense.
We throw that money at them, and really they were to them at the end.
Yeah.
I don't know what Christine thinks, but...
Yeah, I agree.
Well, then you have a little bit of...
Yeah.
And we'll get the truck done, perhaps.
And if we do run into, if we do run into 365 days and they're scrambling around, it's a better kind of bargain with them. We can get some stuff out of them if we were to waive the, you know, the fine. And it's, in many cases, I've heard that it's worked out quite well, so...
Okay.
Now, it goes, they're gonna say something, they tell you everything they wanna hear, but then you get to the very end, and then the truck's not done, and they're making excuses, and I still wanna deal with that. So I put that in there after you guys had booked my RFP over, but I just went ahead and did it.
Okay.
For Madeline to answer your question, the truck, you received a bid for a truck that we want, that's 100%.
Okay.
Needs all the specs requested?
We work in there pretty closely, they're the ones that helped us, you know, create the spec.
Is this outfit the only one around, or are there others? You just only happened to get one bid?
They're the ones that answered the RFP when we posted it. Nobody else came to the front.
And is this company that had been talked about as being very reliable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're the ones that are under term, Brunswick.
Okay.
Yeah, so any, you know, any warranty work with a truck, we go over there. Instead of going to Connecticut, for example, if they were to...
Talk about that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we're kinda being cocky cats, because every department around this whole area is just, you know, providing ones now. Honestly, it's just a coincidence that they were the only ones that replied to the RFP. There are other manufacturers that could have.
Well?
These are the guys that have sat with me, and I am the rest of the committee, for about 50 hours on the fire station, putting this thing together. So they can obviously what we have.
So it's your recommendation we should accept this contract?
That would be my recommendation, absolutely.
And the budget committee?
We voted for it, yes.
Yeah.
And they're, originally it said 575, and they were nice and made it 565, so I thought that was nicely done.
And that's valid for 30 days?
For 30 days, yes.
So we're well within that. Did you want to amend that to include the $100 per day? Fine, if it's not delivered in? Or should we, do you want to accept the contract as bid?
Oh, I see what you're saying now. See, my, my proposal is the one that stated that that's the 365 days. See, they over here, they're aware of it now.
Okay.
I just was a little confused.
Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't say there, but it does say here. So we'll go with the letter of acceptance, okay?
Yeah.
All right, good, that's...
No, I don't have any real concerns with that. I just wanted to explain it to you, because I knew you were unaware of it.
And you're suggesting that we forego the discount and pay at the end of the...
There is no discount if you pay at the end.
Right.
If you pay them upfront, that would give you $15,000 off.
Right, and your, your recommendation is that we hold off and pay at the end when the truck is ready to be delivered? Yes.
I, I agree with that.
I know $15,000 is a considerable amount of money, but...
No, 565,000.
You know.
And the fire truck itself is a lot of money, too.
Exactly.
But they gave you a $10,000 discount.
Yeah, they were, $10,000 less than I originally thought they would be, or I was told that they would be, so...
Well, I knew that we accept this contract and along with the letter, the August 23 letter from Greenwood to Chief Bean as presented.
One second, Ben. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the bid as presented this evening? All right.
Would you like to sign the contract, or would you like to have John sign it?
Yeah, just to look on the page before the last page.
All right.
The last one with the federal size tags, presenting, sir, sir, took it. Which Julie will take care of about here. I pretty much want, countless bath. It's either by Christine Musabenes, Ray, or myself as the fire chief chair, however you wanna do that. And then, and then obviously, Chris from Greenwood will be signing down. Yeah, so we can pick an original.
I believe he should sign this.
It's your truck.
It's your truck.
I think so, too.
Okay.
Here you go.
I will, that's all right, no?
All right.
I'll get it.
All right. We won't have a sound one else sign?
Also, just to wrap up, I have to speak with them the other day. They can get this rate motion by this Thursday. We can meet with them and have a video chat with Florida, and they can take it, board it by Thursday afternoon or Friday morning.
All right.
The reason so soon is because normally the chief or chief and the people on the committee fly to Florida and get a tour, and they get wine and dine, but that's all at the town's expense. I chose not to do that. I don't need, I don't need to do that. So we'll have a, like, two and a half hour video chat. And that's how it's gonna work. The other thing I wanna mention, Chris mentioned in the meeting, is, you know, they have like a midway inspection where you know, fly down and look at it. And we really said, this day and we, you said you're walking up five or six different buildings, and you're gonna see pieces and parts of the truck at a halfway point, and it's not really worth going down there for that. The other thing they do offer on their website is a day-to-day picture process. So you can go online and look at our truck anytime you want to through up the whole process. Now, I feel that at the end of it, it's necessary to fly to Florida and look at it at the end. But I just didn't know how you guys felt about those inspections, and if you absolutely wanted me to go down there midway or not. And I obviously will if you invite me to, but I just don't think it's necessary.
It's necessary. Do they deliver the truck, or do you not get it?
Yeah, it gets, it will be brought up here to their Brunswick location, and that's where it will be weathered, and they pump test it again, and we get to go over there and look at it. They say they're usually there for about two weeks. After they get delivered, they have to have it for about two weeks, and then it'll be ready to come home.
Okay.
Yeah. Actually, if you have any questions, anytime you're just asking, I'll keep you guys informed as it goes.
Great.
Good job. Thank you.
Maybe Kyle can put the truck on the website and keep you updated.
Yes, like Panda Cam.
Well, I cut the truck, I never heard of that before. We can absolutely, if anything, put it, you know, updates on the Facebook page.
Yeah?
That would be easy. We can do that, too, so...
Won't be as cute as Panda Cam.
It won't be to me that way.
I guess it's all in the eye.
It's all in the eye.
Thank you, Chief.
You're very welcome.
Awesome.
Thank you.
How many years have we been talking about this truck?
Ten years.
Well, we planned just five years ago to start and have it ready for five years, so we're on time.
Yeah. Excellent. All right.
Thanks, John.
This is such good news. All right, are we ready to proceed with the taxified property bids?
Mm-hmm. Want to start with Engersky?
Sure.
How many?
Whoever wants to read them. Send one down there, since Madeline has...
Not at all.
...then you have...
This is Engersky.
Teresa Grant, 155 Jordan Avenue, Brunswick, $3,210.
For the total bid.
That's the deposit.
For the total bid.
With it, 32.
One.
One.
$32,000?
Yeah.
Yep.
This one, I'd like to offer $18,001.
And who's the bidder on that?
Steve Rio. Steve is the...
You wanna, or the bid wanted to tie it? Okay, so... The other bid is $32,001.
Oh, yeah.
So you're...
I'm like that.
We, I want a motion to accept the high bid?
I move we accept the higher bid.
One second, Ben. Any discussion about that? Okay, all in favor of the highs awarding the property to the high bidder? All right. Christine, will you take care of processing that?
I will.
And the second is the property at 92 Rockweed? Yeah? The total three bid?
No, there's more, there's two more. There's five total.
So that would be, that's the actual bid?
No, that's the part of the...
Okay, so it would be, we're gonna figure it out, huh? That is your... So $8,111?
$8,1110, if I'm reading it right.
Yeah. And who's that?
Woman Hennessy.
$8,110?
Yeah.
And then this one is from Albert J. Labonte for $15,500. $16,500.
And this third one is from Timothy Vigu, and the bid is for $68,000.
First bid is from whom?
Woman Hennessy, H-O-O-N. This is Suzanne Anderson, $67,890.
The last bid is presented, that is submitted by Norman and Susan.
Nel Hubel.
Nel Hubel. And their bid is for $121,000 even. And that was all of them?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So what is our desire?
I move we accept the highest bid, which is $121,000.
One second, Ben. Any further discussion? All in favor of awarding the highest bid? All right.
Your successful bidders will have until September 6th to pay the balance, and then a claim D will be issued.
And Madam Chair, you did find Grant for the highest bid?
Pardon me?
It was Grant, that was the highest bid on the first property.
Teresa Grant, yes.
Yes, Teresa Grant.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is that all we're looking for? Yeah. Christine, you'll take care of informing the...
I will.
Excellent. Oh, good, we have bids for sand.
Winter sand. Farmers Almanack says it's gonna be very cold.
Well, cold is my... Cold doesn't keep my eyes safe. Anyone seen them, we'll leave it there. No, I've not seen one here.
Then we have a warm Gulf weeks of summer, then.
All right.
So, Country Fair Incorporated out of Bodenham, $27,813.90 per cubic yard, $3,000 extra mix salt and sand and pile. Let's go back with Mary. $30,000.
Yeah, so we're expecting that the, that the sand supplier would mix, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so this would be 38, because it's got the 3,000 and 27, so $30,800 per Country Fair.
How much?
$30,800.
Total?
Yep.
Yeah, that's how they wrote it up.
Yeah.
Correct.
I have Goodall Landscaping. They're asking for $16.25 per cubic yard for a total of $32.5.
Kathleen, what was your cubic yard?
13.
13?
.90.
.90?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Ready?
Yeah.
This is from Jamie Hill, who, JR Hill &amp; Sons Inc., who is also a resident of West Bath. The current price for cubic yard is $19.30. Told contract price of $38,600. And no other information for us to consider.
And I'm holding Reno's excavation. He's quoting $14 per cubic yard and requesting spending a bid for $28,000.
And Mr. Reno is also at West Bath as well.
He is also at West Bath as well. I'm going to exclude myself. Seems appropriate.
For that bid, it has the additional amount.
Okay, so we have, how many this bid here?
We have four bidders, right?
Correct.
$30,800, $32,500, $38,600, and $28,000.
And in this case, the good sense is to... And in this case, the good sense is to award to the low bidder.
One would think.
As opposed to the high bid.
Any... Any discussion?
Just a question, the... Once we get the salt all straightened around. As I remember in the... RFP. The... These bid prices include mixing the two together?
Yes.
And moving into...
Got you. So that was a motion?
Yeah.
What was that?
I move we accept the low bid price of $28,000, $14 per cubic yard.
And I'll second that. And second assumes approval, but...
Does the record note that the selectmen... Kathleen has abstained?
With an abstention and all in favor. Okay. That's good. So the bids and you will take care of applying the bidders?
I will.
Excellent. And the next item on the agenda, should we discuss any others before we talk about committee procedures?
The only other I had was Liv's request, and she's already brought that to your attention.
Okay.
I have nothing else at this time.
Okay, so we'll put that on the agenda for the ninth.
Is that okay with you, Liv?
It's certain.
You hold off till the ninth?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Right, so the next item on the agenda is a discussion of town committee procedures.
I'm gonna do along with you folks. Me and HR are all... I don't know.
My copy. You have a spare, Christine.
I don't have a spare, but you can have mine.
Oh, my bad, my bad. Very good, my title. All right, excellent. So, you're not excited about committee procedures?
I guess not a lot, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Now the... We had a business item number five attachment, which was in addition to implementing the structure policy to the town board, town board recommend...
Yes.
Following changes. Are those changes incorporated in this?
No, they're not. And, you know, if you're not interested in entertaining any changes to our current committees, that's fine. It's more important to me that we discuss the policy so that we can begin setting some rules on paper. So that we're all on the same page with how committees or to interact with staff and with the board of trustees.
Right.
And then from that point, to come up with some written charges. So each committee, the people who join committees, and a lot of people do want to volunteer. That they understand why they're on the committee and what they're supposed to do.
Yeah.
I think it's reasonable to have something in writing. I know that some of these committees were created quite a long time ago for different purposes. It's just good to check in and make sure that we're all doing what is expected.
Some committees have drifted right off into the wilderness somewhere, you know?
And they might not know that.
Right. Right. So, we are talking about policy for committee procedures. And the purpose of this is to provide guidance and direction about the general work of the committee. Common procedures and the roles and relationships of various committees with the board and with staff. There have been... There have also been times when chair of various committees have thought that they could give direction to the office staff, which sometimes has put people in awkward positions. So, shall we just go through this? Point by point? Town committee. Term referring to any appointed body created and confirmed by the Board of Selectmen. And we have three categories, regulatory slash statutory. Those consist of the planning board and the Board of Appeals. Because those are independent, only because they are governed by a statute or ordinance voted on by the town. Quasi... The Board of Appeals is quasi judicial, so they have greater independence. Any questions about that? That seems pretty straightforward. Standing committees. Committees appointed by the selectmen but can be staff-generated. Provide specific support, research, recommendation. That would be things like the Marine Resources Committee.
Correct, committees that are organized and in place for a long period of time.
So, Marine Resources, Planning Board, Budget Committee. Budget Advisory.
Mm-hmm.
Committee and board are interchangeable terms?
Yes.
But task forces are not. Right?
Correct. The Comprehensive Planning Committee would be what I would consider a task force.
Yeah.
And it's different than the other standing committees because generally they meet for a shorter period of time for a specific purpose. Rather than being ongoing.
Yeah.
We all set on that one?
Yeah.
Onward and upward to staff. Staff is considered an employee of the town. Under the management and responsibility, whether directly or indirectly, by the town administrator or the Board of Selectmen. Creation. Formation of committees, creation of committee charge prior to appointment. There shall be a Board of Selectmen approved committee charge containing the following mission or objective, goal or purpose statement for... Mission for standing committees, goal or statement, purpose for task forces. And the charge shall have procedures for members. If we have requirements of different kinds of skills backgrounds. The charge will include the number of meetings per year. And how that... How that committee would relate to staff in terms of management and support. And committee charges could be reviewed periodically. But any charge updates or amendments to the board responsibilities will be agreed to by the Board of Selectmen. All set? Okay. The appointing authority for committees will be the Board of Selectmen. Each committee given a charge, which will state the reason for the committee's formation, its composition, its objectives, and time limitations. The Board of Selectmen may review the official charge at any time. Or upon request of the committee, members will ask current members for their input if we're making any changes to a charge. Committees may request additional volunteers from within or outside the town of West Bath. However, such persons are not considered voting members of the committee. A committee that has been inactive for a period of six consecutive months may be disbanded by the Board of Selectmen. Any committee that believes that believes to have... That the board believes or the committee believes.
The committee.
Any committee that believes that they have fulfilled their charge may ask the Board of Selectmen, through the town administrator, to be disbanded or to have its charge adjusted to continue its work. And applications, all persons wishing to serve on the committee shall submit an application to the town clerk. The town clerk would have applications for specific committees.
We will have one generic application.
Okay.
That they can fill in for any committee they'd like to be a member of.
Okay, sounds good.
Just so we have some information on that.
Right. Yeah, because we don't know everybody anymore.
It's nice to have contact information written down and email addresses.
Appointments. The goal of the appointing authority is to appoint qualified and interested West Bath residents who are broadly representative of the town. The Board of Selectmen may, at its discretion, defer its authority to appoint to the town administrator or department head when selecting members of a task force. If, in the opinion of the Board of Selectmen, time and task assigned to the committee warrants such authority.
The fire truck is an example of that, where a department head was chosen to head up a committee.
Yeah. Selections are based upon current committee composition, qualifications, experience, recommendations, available space, and attendance record. And or previous performance, if applicable. Generally, an individual should serve on no more than two standing committees at a time. All appointees receive written notification of their appointment. And all standing committee appointees must be sworn in by the town clerk before taking any action at a committee meeting. Staff shall provide a copy of this document and applicable pertinent state statutes upon appointment. The appointing authority may interview any resident that applies for appointment to any committee. We haven't done that. That's good. The town administrator appoints staff members to serve as liaisons, consultants, and for administrative support. The actual assignment of staff by the town administrator is based upon the committee charge and how the staff members may best maximize the committee efforts. The Board of Selectmen may assign one of its members to serve as a liaison to each committee they appoint. Committee members shall adhere to the town's Human Resource Policy Manual, as well as any statutes governing public records, communication, and access to information. Everything good so far?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Onward and upward, reappointment. The appointing authority shall evaluate and consider reappointments by request of a committee member. In most cases, those wishing to remain on a committee beyond the initial appointment should notify the town clerk prior to the annual town budget meeting. The town clerk will then forward the list of current members who wish to remain for the following fiscal year for reappointment to the town administrator. Terms may vary by committee. The committee charge will confirm terms. A committee member is under no obligation to accept reappointment, nor is the appointing authority obligated to offer reappointment. Resignation, a committee member who is no longer able to serve should resign promptly so that vacancy may be filled. This allows for a replacement to continue the work of the committee. A written resignation must be submitted to the appointing authority through the town administrator and to the chair of the committee. Other terminations, the appointing authority may ask for a member's resignation or, if necessary, revoke the appointment of any committee member if the authority feels it is in the town's best interest. Additionally, the appointment of a committee member who fails to attend three consecutive meetings unexcused or consistently fails to attend meetings without prior 72-hour notification may be terminated. Written notification to the committee member from the Board of Selectmen will be given in the event of any such action. Before any action is taken, the committee chair should alert the chair of the Board of Selectmen of noted circumstances. The chair of the Board of Selectmen will make a reasonable attempt to contact the member to see if the problem can be corrected. Charge and plan of action. The committee should review its charge at the first meeting of the committee and conduct an annual self-evaluation. The committee, with advice from staff and the appointing authority, shall develop a plan of action to accomplish the objectives set forth by the Board of Selectmen. The plan should include reporting milestones so the committee and the appointing authority can monitor progress, assign resources as requested and approved, adjust objectives if necessary, and for general communication and coordination. Reporting. Reporting at previously noted milestones shall occur at meetings of the Board of Selectmen. The chair or designee is responsible to deliver written reports or actions taken at a meeting to the town administrator at least four days prior to a Board of Selectmen meeting. Reports may also be submitted through the committee's staff liaison. These reports shall be received by the Board of Selectmen at their meeting and acted upon. Action by the Board of Selectmen may include accept under advisement with no action taken, accept under advisement with action taken, return to committee and/or staff for specified additional work, accept and place on a specified future Board of Selectmen meeting for presentation, discussion, and hearing, or take other action. Verbal reports and specific requests may also be made at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen as part of the committee updates. However, if the report needs discussion or action by the Board of Selectmen, the topic may be placed on a specified future Board of Selectmen meeting agenda. This can be done by submitting physical documentation to the town administrator or sent via email to the town administrator on or before the Thursday prior to a scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen. The documentation can also be submitted through the committee's staff person. Additionally, an annual record of activities may be submitted or coordinated with the town clerk for inclusion in the annual town report. You good? Committee officers, elections. Shall... Committee shall elect their own chair, vice chair, and secretary annually upon reappointment or appointment. It is the responsibility of the chair or committee staff to notice... Notify the town clerk of the committee's officers. It is the chair's primary responsibility to facilitate... To fairly facilitate committee meetings. The chair presides at all meetings, decides questions of order, and calls special meetings and signs appropriate documents and reports. The chair may make motions, may second motions, as well as discuss questions, and vote thereon. In discussion, the chair will allow for full range of opinions from the committee and the public. The chair is also responsible for communication with staff and the Board of Selectmen for reporting requests for resources and delivering recommendations from the committee. Other duties include notifying appointing authority of requested resources and actions when appropriate, submitting reports at milestones, submitting requests for placing committee issues on the Board of Selectmen's agenda to the town administrator, attend meetings of the Board of Selectmen to present or assign to his or her designee, act as a contact point with staff and Board of Selectmen liaison, forward concerns of committee members about procedural issues, rumors, or public comments which may seem in contradiction of the committee's charge to the town administrator, and report back to the membership the outcome of said inquiries. The vice chair assumes the chair's responsibility in the chair's absence or as requested by the chair. If the recorder is absent from a meeting, the vice chair takes the... If the recorder is absent from a meeting, the Vice Chair takes the minutes of the meeting. The Secretary, in conjunction with the staff liaison, prepares minutes of the meeting, distributes them to staff as well as members of the Board of Selectmen following approval by the committee. If the Secretary is absent from a meeting, the Vice Chair takes the minutes of the meeting. If determined by the committee, the staff liaison may assume responsibility, the responsibility of the Secretary, but draft minutes shall be approved by the Secretary before final approval by the committee. Staff. The Town Administrator shall assign a staff member to committees appointed by the Board of Selectmen. The staff liaison is assigned to perform the following duties: assist the Chair or Vice Chair in carrying out duties, assist the Secretary in posting minutes to the town website and distributing to interested parties, preparation of agendas, establish a proposed meeting calendar annually for committee approval, provide committee members pertinent research and background materials to support the objective of the committee, provide guidance on committee activities, accompany the Chair or his designees to meetings of the Board of Selectmen for milestone reporting, assist in the preparation of reports to the Board of Selectmen, other duties as assigned by the Town Administrator or the Board of Selectmen liaison in consultation with the Town Administrator, facilitate public workshops as assigned to allow committee members to fully participate in dialogue with the public. Shall we go on? The Board of Selectmen may assign one of its members to serve as liaison to each committee they appoint. They receive all documents, reports, agendas, and minutes along with committee members. Their work with the committee includes attendance at committee meetings, participation and discussion on motions on the floor but not vote, provide guidance on committee activities, support milestone reporting, other recommendations and requests coming from the committee, promote and maintain positive communication between the Board of Selectmen and the respective committee. Meetings. A quorum is necessary to conduct committee business, including opening the meeting. A quorum at a posted meeting exists when more than 50% of the appointed and sworn-in membership is present. The loss of a committee member due to a conflict of interest does not affect quorum. No discussion of committee business shall occur at a posted meeting where no quorum is present in deference to the members not present. For the purpose of posting a meeting and regarding deliberations on committee business, a meeting exists at any time there are more than 50% of members present. Chance interactions between members do not constitute a meeting. However, committee members should respect the members not present and the public process by not conducting deliberations that may lead directly to committee action. Communication on committee business by committee members, whether by phone or electronic means, should not occur with more than 50% of committee members, except in cases of coordinating meetings, canceling a meeting, or establishing quorum. Request replacement of a topic on an agenda with no discussion. Forwarding documents, reports, motions, or requests in which case all committee members, staff, and the Board of Selectmen liaison will be copied, and no discussion on said forwarding shall occur. In rare circumstances, the Board of Selectmen may allow the committee to deliberate and take action on recommendations when no quorum is present. Agendas. The agenda at a minimum should contain the following elements: call to order, amendments to the agenda, approval of the minutes, old business, new business, public comments, follow-up items, set the next agenda with meeting date, time, and place. Adfirmment. Record-keeping. Committees shall provide set of minutes for their record. These are the minutes for the meeting that will be posted in the Town Clerk's files and the website. Any changes to the minutes at the following meeting are noted in the following meeting's minutes. Staff will assist with auditory and/or visual recordings of the meeting on request of the Chair. It is not required to record meetings. Meetings shall contain the following, minutes shall contain the following information: date, time, and location, members present and absent, members of the public and staff present, summary of discussions on each agenda item, attached documents or exhibits from the meeting, motions passed and by whom, including a record of the vote, time, date, time, and follow-up on agenda items for next meeting, the name of secretary or recorder of minutes, and the time of adjournment. Meetings of committees shall occur as needed to carry out the objective and accommodate the members' scheduling needs. A calendar of regular meetings shall be created by staff for committee approval in May for the following fiscal year. Committees may enact rules of order for the conduct of their meetings. Committees may develop bylaws for their committees. Such bylaws must be approved by the Board of Selectmen to be enacted. The Board of Selectmen may approve amendments to recommended bylaws, adopt as presented or not adopt, as they deem appropriate. Meetings open to the public. All committee meetings are open to the public. Any public member can speak at the allotted time on the agenda and/or after being recognized by the Chair. All members of the public should be welcomed at all meetings. Executive sessions for committee work should be kept to a minimum. Prior to the scheduling of an executive session, the Chair shall consult with the Town Administrator and committee staff to determine if the subject matter falls under main statutes for eligibility. Communication between committees. It is recognized that many committee efforts require coordination, assistance, and opinions from other committees. This policy does not seek to inhibit this communication but is meant to ensure a fair and open dialogue. If a committee wishes to coordinate with another committee, it will be carried out as a public workshop with said committee. The purpose of the meeting should be clearly articulated so that all parties know in advance what will be discussed. Prior to scheduling said workshop, the committee Chair or his/her designee shall report the intention to the Town Administrator. This level of workshop and communication is not necessary for minor coordination or questions. These should be carried out through the Chairs and/or committee staff and communicated back to their representative committees, excuse me, respective committees. The Chairs are encouraged to have an annual open to the public workshop to discuss their projects for opinions and coordination. Staff created committees notwithstanding the above policies, the Town Administrator and/or Department Heads may create task forces to assist on a special resource, on a special resource search or other type of staff-led project. Such projects are not otherwise part of an existing standing committee or existing task force. This ability is supported as a useful way for staff to work in teams internally and allow staff to work in concert with citizens with specific skills or backgrounds that may be beneficial to a specified endeavor. These committees should be task or project-oriented and be disbanded upon completion of the work or upon reporting final documents or products to the Board of Selectmen. This policy may be amended at any time by the Board of Selectmen.
What a workout.
You got a question?
I do, just one. Section 12 E, meetings. In rare circumstances, the Board of Selectmen may allow the committee to deliberately take action on recommendations when no quorum is present. Isn't allowing provision to waive the quorum requirement at the discretion of the Selectmen right now, isn't that a rather slippery slope?
It is, definitely. And I can't think of a circumstance where you would allow it unless there was some kind of timeline for completing the project that you had to abide by and you wanted the decision made quickly. But again, it's at your discretion.
So it would have to be some kind of like a emergency deadline.
Yeah, it allows you an opportunity to make that call. You wouldn't necessarily act on it, but it allows you an opportunity to make that kind of decision.
The intention would be clear that such an allowance would be for an emergency situation only.
There could be some sense of urgency with the committee, like Marine Resources, for example. There might be something going on that you have to act on immediately. That's just something that occurs to me. I mean, it could happen, I suppose.
Well, it's probably good to have the provision in there, to have it in there. Makes me uncomfortable. What about unanimous consent of the Board of Selectmen that the committee may act?
Act being the committee.
When no quorum present. Unanimous.
I wouldn't want to tie yourself in that either. Maybe a quorum, because if you do unanimous and somebody's not available, you've tied yourself right down yet, so maybe quorum, selectmen?
Yeah.
And I'm just thinking about rare emergency situations. The right time to put it happening is when it is a rare emergency and we're tying ourselves right down.
Remember that during, there was a lot of stuff going on, a lot of decisions being made, but not a lot of meetings going on. But that was a public safety issue.
Right.
Clearly.
Right.
And whatever happened, happened, and that's the way it is.
Yeah. Or maybe if there's not a form of selecting, the Town Administrator needs to wait. I don't know until you want to do it. I just don't want to see you tie yourself down. If something happens to somebody, they have a heart attack and they had to vote the next night, accepting a huge amount of money from, you know, you just...
I mean, I don't have the objections putting it in. I just...
I see where you have the issue with it. I don't disagree, but I just don't want you to box yourself into...
Right, because we've boxed in not only ourselves in, but a future board.
Well, the future board can change it.
That's true.
But the bottom line is the Board of Selectmen is the final word anyhow. So you're just carrying that forward as having the final word, maybe...
Yeah, we need to wait.
Somewhat.
It's Peter's fault.
Somewhat.
I actually think this is really good work. This is excellent work.
Yeah.
It's a lot of thought in this.
This is helpful, and I think that, I think that there are many points along the way that will help the Board have better information.
And the people who are on the committee, I mean, it's hard. You want to be part of the town, you get on these committees, and you really don't know what's expected, and this is a good format to be able...
Yeah, and I like, I like the, I like the reporting of milestones.
I like that, too.
That, that I think will be helpful.
And I also think it's a good way for everybody in the town, citizens, to know what's going on, too. I think right now we have a lot of committees and nobody knows what's really happening, and this is a way for us and the citizens all to know what's happening.
Right, and I don't think they have to be in-depth reports, but...
No.
A format for that, I think, would be really, will be really helpful. And I like it, I like it. Do we want to adopt this?
I do have a couple things I want to mention.
Yeah, and one of the points, you're talking about videotaping and recording, and then it says it is not required to record meetings. Should there be a distinction that, because minutes, taking the minutes is recording the meeting, minutes are required, or is that not required for all committees?
No, minutes are required for all committees.
I didn't know that, because it's saying recording isn't required.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure of the language.
The requirements for the minutes in, in this document are far more stringent than the state's requirements, which all that is, you have to write down the date and the time, and that's it.
And not necessarily something has to be included now, but I know there's been some issue in the past with committees communicating with the town attorney, and if that is something that should be touched upon.
The town attorney should be...
I might have missed it.
Should be, just Christine should be...
Yeah, I think it makes sense to mention it within this document, though.
Yes.
That the Board Chair can come to the Town Administrator for.
Some exceptions like, you know, calls a forceman officer.
I think there's certain items, like with the planning board in particular, there's certain items that I'm not going to be able to speak on as well as members of the committee. So it would make sense that they would have access to the attorney directly.
Yeah.
Rather than going through me.
But upon your approval.
Right.
You should be part of that process because you need to know what's going on.
Yeah, those are good points. I think we can incorporate both of those and look at it again.
Do we want consultation with the town attorney to be with permission or with the knowledge?
Well, I think it should be both because we might get slapped with a bill.
Yeah.
That we need to be aware of.
Oh, we will get hit with a bill.
Or maybe just the requirement that the Town Administrator be involved in all contact with the attorney, just so that there's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
If the planning board needs to speak to the attorney, they need to speak with Christine first.
Right.
Just so...
Unless they're speaking to the attorney, not that one, Christine. But at that point, they would hire their own counsel.
And then all of us would all be part of it.
Exactly.
Yeah, I like it. Anything else you picked up on?
I've already reviewed it, but hearing it read aloud so well, give me time to think.
I'll tweak that.
Tweak it, maybe not do a complete read.
No, we could go over the amendments to be sure that they're worded, just how you'd like them ready.
I think, I think this is good stuff.
I think it's a good foundation and it's a good place to start and move on to the committee charges.
And then we've been talking about meeting with, with each committee, and if we're, if we put ourselves on the agenda and talk to them about what they're doing and what they think they ought to be doing, and have a good conversation about responsibilities and all that stuff. I think that'll be helpful for all of us.
Absolutely.
And I like the idea of each committee having a liaison, even if, even if the liaison doesn't go to every meeting, that each committee knows that they have somebody on the board or a staff member that they can consult with if there's something that comes up. I think that's, I think that will improve processes. All right. September 9th is going to be a busy, so we should perhaps talk about this again the last meeting in September.
Sure.
Is there any other other?
No, no.
Well, shall we adjourn this meeting and I'll go home or wherever it is we're going next?
Yeah.
May I have a motion, official, to adjourn?
Ooh.
All right. All right. We are out.
Thank you for staying till the end.
Thank you. This is our first town meeting. You were good, very good.
Oh, well, thank you. We ain't pleased.
A bit long-winded at times, I like that.